Tonight, your voice, your future. Immigration in America. A town hall meeting live on the Central Valley CW, K359, and streaming on kmph.com.
Immigration, it's been a hot-button issue in American society for years. And because Congress has failed to act and come up with a good plan to handle the many issues involved with U.S. immigration, President Obama felt he had to.
And as the battle heats up, there is no place that feels its effects more than California's Central Valley. Our area needs thousands of workers to work the fields, pick the crops, to get the billions of dollars worth of crops moved out to feed hungry mouths all over the world.
So why can't lawmakers come up with a plan that's fair, one that works to keep borders safe and allows hard-working families to make a living? Thank you for joining us for tonight's town hall meeting. I'm KPH Fox 26 News anchor Ashley Ritchie.
And I'm KPH Fox 26 News anchor Monte Torres. Tonight, we look at immigration in America.
Tonight, on Your Voice, Your Future Town Hall Meeting, we explore the many things working for and against our area in the area of immigration.
We look at legal and illegal immigration, and we ask you to participate using social media.
Post to our KPH Fox 26 News Facebook page, or you can tweet your questions using the hashtag #YourVoiceYourFuture.
We have an outstanding panel waiting to answer your questions and give their opinions based on years of experience working with immigrants and the issues surrounding immigration.
Bishop Armando Ochoa is a member of our panel for tonight's town hall meeting. Bishop Ochoa is a native Californian who was born in Oxnard. He was ordained as the bishop of the Catholic Diocese of Fresno in February of 2012. Prior to that, he served as bishop of the diocese of El Paso, Texas for nearly 16 years. The bishop may also correctly be called Dr. Ochoa, as he holds a doctor of divinity degree. He has served the Catholic Church in many ways, including as a member of the Texas-Mexico Bishops Council and as a consulate to the Church's Committee on Migration and its subcommittee on Hispanic affairs.
Reverend Jim Franklin is also a member of our town hall meeting panel tonight. Pastor Franklin and his wife Cindy have served as senior pastors of Cornerstone Church in Fresno for 21 years. Under their leadership, Cornerstone has grown into one of Fresno's largest churches, and its website lists a weekly attendance of more than 2,500 people. He is also the founder of Feeding Fresno. Pastor Franklin and his work have been featured on national broadcasts over the years, including the Christian Broadcast Network. And he and his wife maintain an active radio ministry, including a weekly show on KMJ 580 AM.
Manuel Cunha Jr. is the president of the Nisei Farmers League, and he is a member of our town hall panel. The Nisei Farmers League represents growers and related business on issues including labor, housing, and immigration. Mr. Cunha joined the league in 1987 and has been its president since 1996. Before that, he served as an educator for 13 years. He holds a master's in agriculture from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. He has served on many state and federal committees representing the agriculture industry. He is currently a board member and officer of the Agriculture Coalition for Immigration Reform in Washington, D.C.
Republican Congressman David Valadeo is the son of immigrants. His family immigrated from Portugal in 1969, and Congressman Valadeo was born a few years later in the U.S. He is a graduate of Hanford High School and attended the College of the Sequoias in Visalia. His family owns two dairy farms and more than 1,000 acres of farmland in Kings and Tillery Counties. He was elected to the California State Assembly in 2010. He then won a seat in the U.S. House of Representatives in 2012, and won reelection earlier this year. He sits on the House Appropriations Committee and on three of its subcommittees. Those include Agriculture, Rural Development, Food and Drug Administration, and Related Agencies. Thank you for joining us for tonight's town hall meeting.
Here is your moderator for this important event, Mark Hyman.
Thank you. Undocumented, illegal, immigrant, alien, amnesty, rule of law, pathway to citizenship, so many terms and so many phrases, they inspire optimism, they can incite rage, depending on who says them and how they're used. Good evening, I'm Mark Hyman, host of Behind the Headlines, and thank you for joining us this evening. Tonight's topic is about immigration. It's a passionate topic that gets people, well, rather excited on occasion. We've got a great audience here and a fantastic panel you just were introduced to. Our audience has a number of questions they want to get answered tonight, but you at home can also be a part of this important discussion. In a few moments, we'll check in with Fox 26 News anchor Liz Gonzalez, and she'll tell you how you can join the discussion. But first, we're going to start the evening off with the first question, not going to our panel of experts, but to the live audience here. I'm going to ask you a question. I'd like you to respond to the sound of applause. Your two choices and answers are yes and no. Please respond to this statement. Our immigration system is broken. Those who believe yes, please applaud. Those who believe no, please applaud. It's almost 50-50. I want to put the same question to our panel of experts. By a show of hands, yes, is our immigration system broken? If you believe it is, raise your hand. Okay, and so four to zero, I guess. Would you please join me up here for a moment? We're going to go to our first audience member question this evening. Please tell us who you are, where do you live, and what is your question?
My name is Camille Cook. I'm an immigration attorney, and I live in Fresno, California.
And your question?
And my question is, there are a lot of people in the Central Valley that are very excited about the opportunity to get a work permit, basically based on how long they've been in the United States or the fact that they have kids here. But what are you going to do, in particular Representative Valadeo, about all the farm workers who still don't have any options, many of whom have been here for years? Thank you.
Congressman, great question, because we're talking about millions of people in a variety of categories. So what about those migrant workers?
Well, as she alluded, what the president did the other day did not cover every aspect of immigration. It was a very small portion of the actual population. Immigration reform has to happen, and especially on the ag side. That's one of the reasons why we've pushed it. And the immigration bill that was passed out of the Senate had an immigration portion for agriculture-specific that was negotiated between ag, labor, and Republicans and Democrats in the Senate. And even some of my most conservative friends there in the House have said that that was one of the portions of the legislation that was probably the best negotiated because it had a balanced approach from both sides. There are other parts of the bill that are complicated, but on the ag side, especially since Reagan back when he did what he did in the '80s with the amnesty portion, he did not fix the guest worker program that affects agriculture specifically, and that's something that we've been in desperate need of for decades now. So we're going to continue to work to try to get something done.
Let me follow up with the bishop. Why do we have so many challenges on this particular issue? What can we do to fix it? The congressman addressed some of what's going on in Washington. We know what the president has done in terms of executive action, but what else should be done, if anything?
Well, certainly, there's different ways to approach it, but I think what we as the Roman Catholic Church really has been for the last 10 years and even prior to that is really trying to underscore what about the root causes in the countries, the sending countries? I think we have to follow Pope Francis's lead and say, what can be done to work with those host countries and to see what kinds of areas can enhance the family unity, advance the economic outreach to those who would live, rather than having to come and leave their country of origin in search of a better life?
Well, let me follow up with the reverend, because there's little doubt. This is the most generous country on the face of the planet. We do so much for so many people, even outside our country, but it's also a challenging time for Americans. Is there a limit to what we can do? Because the bishop raises some great issues in terms of can we make life better for people in their home countries, but are we at a breaking point?
Well, I think America has always proven the fact that we are the first to reach out to those that are in need. We've shown that in times of disaster. I think just like the bishop said, we recognize in other countries the great problems that are there that literally cause people to want to come to this country. We want to reach out and help in every way. But just like, I think, when you're on an airplane, you recognize the first thing that they tell you to do, that in times of lack of oxygen, when you take that mask, if you're traveling with a small child, don't put it on the child first, put it on yourself, because we know why they tell us to do that. That way, you're the adult, and you'll be able to help that child if the child's first. That's why I believe that we have to do everything we can to keep America strong so that we can reach out and help to solve some of the problems that are impacting our world.
And so let's bring it back to the immigration issue. So keeping America strong, what does that entail in terms of the immigration issue?
Well, I think when we talk about keep America strong, so that we can be that compassionate country, so that we can reach out and that we maintain the balance that we have here within this country to be able to do that, so that we welcome all and be able to do that in a proper way.
And is the status quo acceptable, or do we need changes in terms of immigration?
Well, when I say "status quo," I wouldn't call it that. As I said, we got a broke system that's not working right now. That's why we've got to fix it. That's why we see the upheaval. That's why there's so many different sides to this, because everyone recognizes that it's not working, so that's why we've got to fix it.
We're back to the studio audience, sir. Please tell us who you are, where do you live, and what is your question?
My name is Victor Lopez. I am the mayor of the city of Orange Cove, California, and son of an immigrant that immigrated to, from Mexico to California. My question is that in 2013, what was the dollar amount of contribution to the Social Security Administration by Hispanics?
Does anyone know that? Mr. Cunha?
Yeah, in January 1 of 2014, it was close to $510 billion, what they call the no-match account, which means a suspended account, that the dollars are there, but they don't know where to go because the name and number doesn't match. That was in 2014, January 1.
That's probably the last time, Congressman, we'll ever hear a discussion about money in Washington, and they don't know where their money's supposed to go.
They were expected.
Anything to add on this?
No, that is something that's been talked about quite a bit. There are a lot of folks that put a lot of money into accounts that don't exist or even other people's accounts because they're using someone else's social security number. And it's something that has been talked about quite a bit, but it still isn't the focus of what we've been working on immigration. Immigration that we focus on is solely on the purpose of who wants to come to this country and why, and how we can be of assistance and what benefit there will be for our country.
Let's go back to the bishop, because you certainly, the church talks a lot about the compassion and so forth, and where's the line drawn in terms of compassion and the money? And there's always a trade-off in how do we make those decisions?
Well, there is always a trade-off, and obviously, what our focus is, is really the unification of the family. We think in terms of, I too am a son of two immigrants, one from Guadalajara and one from Morelia, but they were naturalized citizens. But yet, because of that, certainly there's a sensitivity toward trying to reach out to the underserved, and especially that's where we find ourselves at this particular time. But yes, there is that compassionate element, and especially when we saw the faces of those unaccompanied children, that really tugged, looking for 1,001 different reasons, whether it's a family member over here, or certainly escaping violence, which is really something that's happening in Central America. And so we do have to balance that, but the humanitarian part is really, we are our brothers and sisters' keepers, you know, certainly. That's really the focus of the church.
All right, we're only about 10 minutes into the discussion, and already we had some great questions coming from our live audience. I know the people at home want to be a part of this discussion. Before we check with our social media desk, I want to get one more question in from our live audience. Please tell us who you are, where do you live, and what is your question?
My name's Lance Manobog, and I live in Fresno, California. I have a concern regarding how immigration will affect my generation. How will it affect my generation, do you guys think?
What do you think, Reverend? How would it affect the next generation? And is it positive or negative?
In what way?
Economically, mostly regarding the middle class.
Well, I think that's one of the main reasons that we're looking at this question, because we recognize that immigration does impact our country economically. There's no way to deny that. And left unchecked, as in any system, then you're going to create problems. And I think that's what everybody's looking at. How do we solve this problem, as I mentioned before, with Social Security, with all that? How do we bring that into balance? We've got so much in our country that's out of balance economically. To add one more thing to it, that's why we've got to fix it. It's broke.
But let's follow up, but where do you draw the line? Because this is, we've heard the phrase all along, this is a nation of immigrants, and most of us have at some point have come here. Is there an acceptable number? And how do we decide that number of how many people to let in at a time? What do we do with the people who are here, who aren't, whether you want to use the phrase "illegal" or "undocumented," whatever the phrase is?
Well, logic tells you that there is a number. I mean, just basic logic. I mean, everybody from the whole world can't come live in the United States. It just won't work. Now, that's reduced to think that they would, but there obviously is a number. That's where the system, how do we take care of those that are here and those that are coming in a fair, compassionate way? That's the debate of how we do that.
Well, let's bring Mr. Cunha back in the conversation. Anything to add on that? You certainly were great with those numbers before. So is there a good number in terms of, he talks about the next generation? Should there be a limit to how many people we bring in, and how do we decide what that number is?
I think when going back to what happened in 1986, immigration law, when President Reagan signed into law, IRCA, he said, "I'm only starting the beginning. The Congress needs to finish it." Okay? Because immigration is not an ending thing tomorrow. And for the amount of people that are here in this country that have been here for 20, 30 years, we haven't fixed the system to deal with those that are here. Now we need to bring in guest workers in all different industries, agriculture and non-ag. And people from other countries want to come here only to work and go home. They're not here to live here, but when they are forced that they cannot get even, when they're here, to go home in the last 10 years. And I know that in our audience, there's a sheriff here and a policeman. Both folks know what human trafficking is, and we've seen an increase to human trafficking of young people and older people, because we don't have a system that allows people to come and go in our countries, in Central America or wherever it's at. So his future is very important, but we also need to have a future for guest workers to come in here, because there are people in the United States today that will not do work, for example, in agriculture. They will not harvest the crops, they will not prune, they just don't do any of that. But we feed the world, and so we need to have that workforce and take care of them. So by having a guest worker program that we don't have, that's broken, and the Congress has failed for 20-some-odd years to deal with it, then we've got to deal with it, because it will impact. But again, we are a country of immigrants. A couple weeks ago, I did a swearing-in part of a ceremony. 34 countries were receiving citizenships. 34 countries in the United States, but we have numbers, quotas. We already have quotas in various countries, and when they get to that, then no more can come in. But we got to just have an immigration program that works with guest workers and those that have been here, taking care of them.
Congressman?
Well, I think that this is, the focus is always around just the guest worker side of it, and immigration is a much bigger issue than just that. We face a lot of industries, especially in California, on the medical device, on pharmaceuticals, technology, where we are struggling to bring or to fill certain roles. And we've actually lost opportunity in some businesses who, because there's someone from some country that specializes in something very specific for that company, they couldn't get the guest worker visa for that person to come in, and we missed out on a whole branch of jobs, and that department would have been created and was actually created in another country. But then you also have to look at a lot of other people that come to this country, not just for the guest worker side, but people like, a lot of people that live in the valley today, who come from a very, maybe socialist country or a country where their freedoms aren't like the U.S. They don't have the same opportunities, not the same ability to take the same amount of risks, start their own businesses. And a lot of those people end up owning businesses themselves. I mean, anybody that's traveled, knocked on doors, or been in any part of our districts or of our valley, you'll see that there are a lot of businesses started by immigrants. And so to assume that they're just here on the guest worker side, just here to wait tables or just here to pick crops, is not an accurate representation. A lot of people, I mean, even my local Domino's Pizza in Lemoore, guy came to college in California, ended up delivering pizza for Domino's, and now they own 70 of them. And they employ a lot of people, and it's a lot of people that are working their first job, delivering pizza and going to college, but it's a startup. And it's someone that came to this country, speaks with a very strong accent, and employs a lot of people and brings a lot of revenue in. And I think that's something people have to remember about immigration reform. It's not just the guest worker or the person bussing tables. It goes a lot higher in this, and I've even seen statistics out there that 36% of the new business startups are immigrants.
You know, we're only about 15 minutes into this, and we have a number of questions that have been asked, but for days, our viewers have been sending comments and questions on both Facebook and Twitter. So let's check in with our social media desk. Liz, what do you have for us?
That's right, Mark. While we are hearing so much from our panelists, we also want you at home to participate in tonight's town hall on immigration in America. You can participate a couple of different ways. You can participate through Twitter or Facebook using the hashtag #YourVoiceYourFuture, which you see right here. Some of you have already been sending in your comments, as Mark mentioned, for several days. Some of those comments echoing what some of our panelists are saying. Alicia Velasco Garcia wrote us on Facebook, saying, "My only concern with immigration is how we can further avoid, avoid further depletion of our economy, providing benefits such as SNAP, unemployment benefits. Should a cap be put on said benefits?" Ron Benton also messages on Facebook, saying, "If the government is aware of the 5 million illegal immigrants in the country, why haven't they already been arrested and deported?" Jesus Gallegos asked what a lot of young people may be wondering. Will it be possible for people with the Dream Act to gain permission to join the U.S. Armed Forces? Joanne Crane also chimed in over on Facebook, saying, "Has anyone thought about how this will affect jobs in California? How do we know if these people are just avoiding jail time in their own country?" Those are some of the comments that have come in so far. We continue to follow some of the other comments. Now, for those of you that are joining the broadcast right now on the CW, K359, we're going to be taking a quick break, but if you are watching over the web, the live stream will continue from our studio with the panel and audience.
Back to the audience with another question. Please tell us who you are, where you live, and what is your question? And what do you do for a living?
I'm Margaret Mims, and I'm the sheriff of Fresno County. Public safety are our main interest in our profession. So I would like to hear from the congressman, I think, on border security, which is concern number one for us. Just a few weeks ago, a Placer County deputy sheriff and a Sacramento County deputy sheriff were killed by somebody who had been deported four times. So, and then we balance that with public trust. How do we gain the trust of those that are here illegally, who are afraid to report crimes when I believe it's very under-reported? And then lastly, Manuel Cunha, talk about the problem with the I-9 audits that we faced a couple of years ago.
Well, the border. And you have to talk about the fence, because it's an issue that the fence, depending on who discusses it, it inspires a sense of security and safety or anger?
No, and the security side of it is a very important issue. And legislation that I signed onto, one of the first things that had to be done was secure the border. I've been on the border myself. I've walked along and seen where a fence was built, erected, and there, and pretty impressive, and then all of a sudden it just stops, and there's a wide-open field where you could run across it. Especially with what's going on in the world today. I mean, there's a lot of terrorists out there that want to do damage, the drug running, and all my conversations with my local law enforcement has always been the same. We catch the bad guys, we send them back. Within a day or two, they're back here in the U.S. And it is something that has to be addressed, and I've always said, and I think we have to continue to say, that securing the border to make sure that the bad people stay out has to be a priority. The thing that's frustrated me as a member of Congress and as a Republican is, even though that's the line that's always used, we have to secure the border first, not even one bill has been passed yet on securing the border from the Republican-controlled House. If they say that's the first step, let's do it, and I've pushed leadership to do so. And as far as, and I can't remember the second part of the question, I know the third one's for Manuel.
Community trust.
The community trust, and that's something that we've struggled with quite a bit, because on the immigration side, there are a lot of folks that have come to this country, broken our laws to come here, but to do nothing more than just work really hard in our fields. And it's sad, because you have a lot of these folks that are here, want to do their best to be good citizens, and are afraid to call the police. And I've actually seen one person himself who started their own business, they were doing some agriculture work, bought a piece of equipment, were paying cash for it, and the person they purchased it from decided to take it back, drove up, hooked up to it after it had been halfway paid for, and drove off and says, "Hey, call the cops. Knock yourself out." The guy couldn't do anything about it. And he was just a person that was trying to make a better life for themselves, and it's frustrating. It's something that we have to address, and it's why I think immigration reform has to be done properly and done right and debated in the House.
And if we can get a response from Mr. Cunha, and then I certainly want to bring the bishop into the conversation in a moment.
Well, I think in the United States, we have what we call audits, ICE audits. And the ICE audits go after businesses. They go in, the Department of Homeland Security, in the past several years, have gone into businesses, and they ask you to bring up your I-9s, then they run the system through the eVerify system that is there, and when that comes back to the employer, they have to terminate all these people. Terminating all these people, then they have to go find a job, but they're not arrested or they're not deported. But the sad part of it is that the people that they're asking to be removed from your business are those that are working very hard and have been here for 20, 30 years. And so the audit process that the government has is that, finally with the latest new Secretary of Homeland Security, they're focusing on human trafficking problems and the drug problems, rather than worrying about employers that may have a person that may not have the right document. And so now they have stared away from that. But what we found out in this valley is that people that were terminated from their employer then were victimized by the human trafficker, because they knew they were in employment, went after them and said, "Here's what you'll do for us, and you will do these drugs, and you will handle this. If not, we're going to take care of a family member." In other words, getting rid of that person, killing that person. So it has to be dealt with, and the congressman is right. If we don't deal with this, we are now creating another business in the United States, and it's called human trafficking, and it's increasing, and it causes our sheriffs, our police, and everybody, because workers will not go to them because of their status. They're worried about, "I'm going to be deported if I see an accident or if I see a shooting." They're not going to do it, which is a shame, because they're part of our community, and we need to deal with it.
And I want to bring the bishop back in the conversation, and Mr. Cunha actually addressed an issue that's so significant, because it's, human trafficking is something I think we at Fox 26 would be the first to admit, it's not reported as much as it should be, and it's a bigger problem, and it makes us feel uncomfortable to even think about it. The church is actively involved, but what else can we do as a community to resolve that issue? Because regardless of how we feel about the immigration issue, we would all agree, human trafficking is just an evil way to treat human life.
I sat in a symposium a few months back, and it was right here in Clovis, and the young lady seated right next to me was one of the witnesses, and she said she lived no more than 12 blocks from that particular, the Islamic center where we had this symposium. And no one knew about it, and there she was. It wasn't that she was, it was doing domestic work. It wasn't necessarily, she wasn't sold into sexual slavery in that sense of the word, but there's other areas of human trafficking. And many of the unaccompanied children are even taken away from their families and steered in that direction, because on their journeys north, wherever they came from, they're interrupted, and certainly they, whether they're young boys or young girls, some are already snatched away, and they really disappear, because many of those coyotes, as we refer to them, know that they're out there and nobody knows who they are. They don't have names that go with the faces, and so consequently, it is an area of concern. What can we do? I think we need to really bring our community to get more involved, to realize that this is a silent population right here in Fresno County. We had a police officer from the PD who was sat on that particular symposium as well, and it was really interesting to hear on that task force, the kinds of things he was confronting day in and day out. But I think we need more education. It was just an eye-opener for me. I just did not realize how many of the young people were really involved in this trade.
And let me just, a quick follow-up of the reverend, because in the last year, there was all the news about the unaccompanied minor children, and at Fox 26, we know that there could be issues, not to say there is, but there could be issues with, were they all, these tens of thousands who came into this country, were they all being reunited with families? Or were some of them perhaps victims of some of this human trafficking that we hear so much about? You know, how do we, they seem to be coupled, the immigration issue and human trafficking. Is there a way to uncouple those, or is it just too difficult?
Well, anytime you've got unaccompanied minors, I don't care where they come from, without supervision, without protection, you've got a recipe for a problem. So you add to that the fact that here are individuals that are from another country now that are in a strange land that have no ties to anyone around them, or at least they're trying to get to that. We then talk about the coyotes and the exploitation that is available there for them. This is a recipe for danger, and that's, I think that's the thing that our heart goes out to when we see that taking place, that you can't abandon those kids. You can't just say, "Well, you know, just send them back." Something has to be done. And so, you know, a heart of compassion goes out, and I think just like the bishop said, this is something that happens not only on the border, but it happens right here within our own county. The more we're aware of it, the more we talk about it, the more we expose it, the more that we don't turn our back on it, because it's the dirty little secret nobody wants to talk about, but yet it's happening all the time. You throw the light on, and suddenly we expose it for what it is, regardless of where they come from, regardless of what their accent is. come from, regardless of what their accent is. Human trafficking is happening all around us. We need to talk more about that.
All right. I want to get one more question from our live audience here. And then after that, we're going to check in with our social media desk and find out what the viewers at home think. But sir, please tell us who you are, where you live, and what is your question?
My name is Robert Silva, the mayor of the city of Mendota. We're in western Fresno County. And one of the things that we haven't talked about is right now, and I think Mr. Valadeo might have something to add to this. You know, they're talking about over 5 million people that are living here undocumented. What do we do with these folks? Many of them have been here for 20, 30 years. They have a family, they started a business, they got their kids in college, they're paying a mortgage. What can we do? What's expected from our government? What, to be in a humane way, dealing with this subject? It's a tough subject, but it's out there right now.
So there are two schools of thought in Washington, and obviously both are pretty extreme. One is deport them all. And I don't know if our government is even big enough or strong enough to do that. And the other side, you hear basically citizenship for everybody. And I think the honest answer is come up with a system to go through the process, figure out who these people are, do background checks, make sure that they've done nothing else wrong other than be here and a hard-working citizen. But it, as far as Washington, it has to be an honest debate about getting to the root of the problem, figuring out who these people are, and just filtering through until we get through them all and figure out who they are and move them accordingly. But as far as the way things have been going, ignoring it just continues to allow them to stay here and live in the shadows, and this debate continues in Washington, and it's really frustrating. It's something that has to be addressed, and it has to be brought up.
Bishop, I don't want to make this sound political because it isn't, but I think the generally agreed number is there's somewhere in the neighborhood of 11 to 12 immigrants in this country who are here illegally. And at one point, when the president was talking about his executive action, he essentially said, who are we to say who can come and who cannot stay? But then he settled on a number of five. And you have to ask the question, well, if it's 12, why not go with 12? Why is it 5 million get this certain amount of executive action? Why not the 12? Or why isn't seven? Why isn't two? How do we settle that number of 5 million? And how significant is that?
Well, it's really, when we talk, we use the terminology, the folks in the shadows. That really is, whether they're 5 million, or 12 billion, or 17 million, God only knows. But the reality is, how are we going to put them or give them an opportunity? I totally agree. We need the background checks. But from our particular point of view, let's do everything, let them pay the fines that they necessarily would have to, get at the back of the line. There are going to be some who are not going to be counted because they have, according to the background records, they're felons, and they might not even re-even apply. So that's probably why some of those numbers were whittled down. But we really don't have a number that we can really, if the president said 5 million, we'll let it, we'll let it go at that for the time being. But we all know that there's more than that across the nation.
Studio B is filled. Every chair is filled. A lot of questions from our live audience here. But we're getting a lot of comments and questions on Facebook and Twitter. So let's check in with our social media desk. Liz, what's the latest?
That's true, Mark. Not to take away from our wonderful panel of experts there, but you at home also a big part of tonight's town hall on immigration in America. We want to remind you that you can join in on the conversation by posting over on our Facebook page. That's facebook.com/KMPHFox26. And remember, you can also tweet us using the hashtag #YourVoiceYourFuture. Let's take a look at what some of you have been asking or saying tonight. Robert Graham asks, why is there even talk about immigration reform? He says there is nothing wrong with our immigration laws, they just need to be enforced. Cynthia Bernardino posted this on Facebook, asking if this law, this what President Obama has proposed, doesn't pass, what will happen to the immigrants that have been here 10-plus years? I should say not so much what he proposed, but the executive order. What will this happen? What about the families that those immigrants have made here? Again, Cynthia, thank you so much for participating. Clearly, a lot of strong emotions when it comes to this issue of immigration. We want to remind you at home that if you're watching on the K3CW 59, we will be going to a brief break right now. But if you're watching the live stream, stay with us as the conversation continues over in our studio.
All right. We're going to follow up with this gentleman, and after we speak with this gentleman, get his question. Then I want to put Chief Dyer of the Fresno Police Department on with us because people talk about the issue of security and so forth. And let's go to someone who's in that business about safety and security and what that means. But first, I want to follow up with this gentleman. Please tell us who you are, where you live, and what is your question?
My name is Anthony Marish. I live here in Fresno. And my question is, what are we going to do to make sure we reinforce our law enforcement to make sure that we treat these immigrants with respect? Because they're human beings just like the rest of us. I married a woman, a young lady, 42 years ago. I've been married for 42 years. And she came across the border with a green card and did everything the right way and with a green card and became a American citizen. So through due process, I think they should be entitled to it also, but make sure they treat it with respect. And that, of course, with the law, if they're involved in law problems, and that's another story of its own.
So you're concerned about the respect that those who are living in the shadows aren't getting?
Yes, correct.
Mr. Cunha, what do you think?
Well, I would absolutely agree that I think a major portion of our law enforcement in this valley, Fresno, our sheriff's department, our other seven counties, they really do care about their communities. They care about the workers, they care about the families. If I was looking at some other states, I think they have a different philosophy. But I do know that the chief and Margaret Mims do everything they can to respect those folks that are living in the shadows because I think they've already said several times, we need to make those people feel like if they see a crime, they can deal with it so it doesn't escalate. If they see human trafficking going on, they can call them. I see our valley sheriffs and our valley police, and even Chief Dyer, they care about what is going on in our community, and they treat these, and I've been at it a long time, they take care of our people that are here, and they are just as much. The three Bs of the United States that went into effect in '12, badges, Bible, business and agriculture, all together supporting comprehensive immigration in 2012, 2013, and it failed because they couldn't move it out of the Senate because of jealousy over there in the House. But these folks went and spoke. Margaret, our sheriff, went to the White House to speak about the importance of comprehensive immigration. The border has to be done. But we have to take care of these people. They need to be taken care of. So I don't know how else to say it, but our people care in this valley. I've been listening to some other states, they have a different philosophy. But this state, this valley cares about its community, its people, and those that aren't legal, they treat them with the utmost respect. I haven't seen one complain about what I've worked with in the fields with farmworkers, the good ones. If there's a bad one, take them away. But if they're not, they've treated our people with respect.
I want to follow up and bring the reverend back in the conversation because in the last several months, there have been some notable national news stories that involve altercations between members of the public and law enforcement. And it presents a challenge, not to say who's right or wrong, but it's certainly an issue we're concerned about. Any thoughts to add to this whole discussion about the relationship with local law enforcement and those who are here illegally, undocumented, whatever phrase you want to use? What can we do to at least, and we're going to check with the chief in just a moment?
Well, I think we're very quick to pull out the race card, whether it be black or brown or whatever. And anytime we see people of different races in an altercation, then immediately we go to, well, it's because of race. That must be what it is. When I think, just like what you're talking about on some of the national scenes of what we've seen, even family members of those that were involved said, no, it didn't have anything to do with the race, but that was the first thing that we jumped to. So I think just as Manuel has said, everything that I've experienced over 21 years of being in this valley has seen nothing but for respect because everybody should be respected. Everybody's God's children. I don't care who they are, everybody should treat each other with respect and with that love and the dignity that they deserve. And if we're not careful, we immediately draw sides, and we pull out the thing that's so easy to pull out. Race is one of those. We need to get deeper than that and really look at the character of a person, and that's where we're going to be able to solve problems.
And if you would tell me who you are?
Fresno Police Chief Jerry Dyer.
Okay. And certainly, language by itself can be a barrier. What are some of the things that the police department has done and can do in order to ensure or lessen the chance of violent encounters, if you will? What are some of the things that you might do within your department so that we don't have the issues that this gentleman asked about his question earlier?
Well, first off, it's important to have policies in place that our police officers are governed by. And number one, we do not care about a person's immigration status. Our policy even prohibits officers from asking a person what their immigration status is. It's not important to us in law enforcement. And then training is second. Making sure regardless of an individual's background or race, that they're treated with respect. And that comes through training, and that comes through the culture that you set within the organization. Those are the foundations. And in terms of the language barriers, we have a significant number of officers in our department, as the sheriff does, who speak Spanish, who speak various languages that are reflective of this community, and that's important to us.
And from the various immigrant communities, minority communities, how important it is for your force to have an ethnic and racial makeup that at least kind of mirrors what you see in the regular public?
Well, trust is the foundation for law enforcement. We are only allowed to police neighborhoods based on a trust. And in order to be completely trusted, you have to look like the community in which you represent. And so, and we do. And we try to be reflective in recruiting of our officers. But making sure that the neighborhoods in which we police, that not only are the officers getting to know them, but that the neighbors get to know our officers. And I think what's really, really important is the trust factor that has been talked about tonight. It's so important that folks from the immigrant community trust us enough to come forward with information. Some of these individuals live in neighborhoods where we have drive-by shootings, we have drug dealing. So important for them to be good witnesses, to bring forth that information so that we can solve their problems. And when they don't trust law enforcement, or they're fearful that we're partnering with some federal agency that's going to deport them, it makes our job very, very difficult, which is why we've taken the approach to not inquire about a person's immigration status, nor do we partner with those federal agencies that are involved in deportation.
Let me bring the bishop back into the conversation because the chief talked about trust. And we probably all think back to the old days of cops on the beat in the neighborhoods, knocking on doors, looking in businesses, having conversations. And for a number of reasons, we won't debate those, we tend to see more police officers in vehicles and driving through. Maybe they're stretched too thin. Would it help from this aspect of at least having a better relationship, perhaps to have more law enforcement? So we could have that proverbial cop on the beat, if you will. So he's known in his neighborhoods, and there's that hand, that eye gaze, that eye exchange, the handshake as opposed to a wave from a car. Any thoughts?
I think all of us would agree that really, in a perfect world, that would really be the way. I was, for most of my years in the ministry, I was just kind of a grunt. I was a general practitioner, if you like. I was what they call a parish priest. But that involved me in the neighborhood, it involved me going to the homes and seeing where people were living in, what kinds of life situations they encountered day in and day out. If I could just piggyback on the chief's comment, I think part of the reason that I really learned firsthand, 15 years there in the border region of El Paso, next to Ciudad Juarez, the most violent during that particular time in my tenure there, there was, nobody knew who was wearing a uniform. And many of the folks coming from Latin and Central America are very distrustful because of the corruption. And so consequently, I'm sorry to say many times, guilt by association. And that's where boots in the neighborhood would be great, but certainly with all the demands in law enforcement, I'm sure that can't necessarily do. But pilot programs are really great. I think it's important.
Reverend, anything to add?
Well, without a doubt, when you've got enough officers to be able to walk a beat and get involved on a personal level in a neighborhood, I mean, that's, that makes sense. It's just a cost factor. And we've seen here, I know, talking with the chief here in Fresno, how we've had to reduce our police force, unfortunately. And that's what the cause is. Yeah, if we had more officers out on the street, it just makes sense. It would be a safer, friendlier community.
This is a great opportunity for me to take a break here and go back and check in with our social media anchor. So Liz, what's the latest for us?
Well, people at home clearly, strong emotions on the issue of immigration in America, reacting to some of the comments, excuse me, from the audience tonight. We've been asking for your questions or comments through Facebook and Twitter. Here's what some of you are saying. On Twitter, our user at there says, that's how he identified himself, asked this about, or says this about the undocumented having driver's licenses. Quote, "They will drive anyways, so it is better for everyone that they take the driver's test." Heather Evans writes, "The government needs to focus on the people, Americans, before it starts adding all of these illegals. Focus on the people who pay taxes and make it better for us." She says, "Americans first." Now, again, we continue to follow the different messages that you are posting over on Twitter or on Facebook, asking that you please use the hashtag #YourVoiceYourFuture. That way we can track them down and obviously bring them to our audience. Those of you that are watching the broadcast tonight on the K3CW 59, we are going to be going to a quick break. Meantime, the live stream continues from our studio.
And we're back with our live audience. Sir, please tell us who you are, where you live, and what is your question?
My name is Dan Yassine, and I'm Vice President, membership of Peace Fresno. My question is comparing the plan, the action that was taken at the time of Reagan and what Obama has done. At that time, the estimate was there were about 4 million immigrants, and a bill that was signed by Reagan legalized almost 2 million. The big difference was that that was a congressional action, bipartisan action, started with Republican Senate and passed by both houses. Here, we have been talking about it for years, and Congress has not done anything, nothing is done. And what Obama has done doesn't do anything except tells people that they will not be deported for three years. There's no path to green card or anything. So I would like panel's opinion on what the Obama action is. Does it solve anything?
Let me just add something onto this because it's a question perhaps we all have. And I'm going to actually start with the congressman because we've gotten to a point where it seems so many issues become party issues. And he was just addressing more of a bipartisan approach 30 years ago. Why have all these issues become such a party issue where Rs and Ds fall down on either side of this and so many other issues?
Well, it's interesting because I'm one of the very few Republicans nationally that have come out in support of immigration reform, and I've taken a lot of heat from my own party. One of the things we struggle with the most is buzzwords. You start hearing everything, anything, any idea thrown out there in Washington, it's automatically amnesty, or it's not enough, and they start calling people racist. And there is a group of us, a small group, but it's slowly growing, members that actually want to do the right thing here and come up with a solution, a piece of legislation that's long-term, that actually, that addresses the needs we have today for today's economy, for today's society, and for today's America. Something that has real implications, something that could actually make a difference, and rules in place that benefit agriculture, that benefit our communities, that don't hurt the American worker. But it's going to have to, it's going to fall back on the general public, getting away from those buzzwords and having a normal conversation. And everything you hear on the news, everything you hear on talk radio, it's always amnesty this, or racist that. And there is a ground here that we can talk about this and pass a piece of legislation that makes a difference. It's just going to take a level-headed approach, and more members willing to take some risks and work across the aisle.
And the gentleman had a great question, Bishop. And I opened up the program by using terms and phrases that, depending on who uses them, can inspire optimism or anger or rage because amnesty has certain connotations, and it gets people going. How can we get past that language barrier so that we're not caught up in all these terms that perhaps divide us more than when maybe there's more agreement on the actual issues?
Well, I see the, what you present is really, it's a conundrum because really, there's just so much out there. When we think in terms of what are we going to do, language really can either break a community or bring it together. And I think that part of that is maybe, I speak for part of the clergy, that we need to really come together, first of all, in prayer. Prayer certainly is going to be able to, and for whatever denomination, to really be, bring our folks back to understand we're talking about fellow human beings. And we've got to do away with the rhetoric so that we might be able to start treating people as really our brothers and our sisters. That's so, so important at this particular time and the discussion as well.
All right. This is a great time for me to take another break and check back in with our social media desk because the producers tell me social media is blowing up with people who want to join this discussion. So Liz, what do you have for us?
Well, that's right, Mark. We continue keeping up with what you at home are saying about tonight's Immigration in America Town Hall. Some of you have talked about the impact on social services, the legality and necessity of this reform. of this reform, but some wanted to talk directly about the impact to jobs, especially in areas dependent on immigrant labor, as we see here in California's Central Valley. Chases Nada, as she wants to be called, writes to us on Facebook, "Most of our valley is made up of small farmers. Who will plant? Who will prune? Who will pick the harvest? You and I? We have our own lives and jobs to do." Patricia Geiger, however, countered that last comment with this, quote, "Once they come out of the shadows, I do not know who will do that job." Thomas Rodriguez writes to us on Facebook, "Legalization means welfare eligibility for a majority of illegal immigrants. Everyone should have an opportunity, but that's a leg up on working-class people that have to pay for food and healthcare." Karina Garcia responded to some of those who support the reform on our Facebook page, writing, quote, "I'm illegal, so does that make me a criminal? FYI, I was brought here and not by choice." We want to thank everybody for being part of the conversation over on our social media accounts, both on Facebook and Twitter. Again, facebook.com/KMPHFOX26. And if you have Twitter, simply write out your question using the hashtag #YourVoiceYourFuture, and hopefully we can continue bringing those two members of our audience at home, as well as in the audience that we have in our studio. Now, if you're watching this broadcast on the CW, on the K3CW 59, we're going to go to a quick break. Meantime, the conversation continues. For those watching the livestream, over with Mark.
We're back to the live audience. Sir, please tell us who you are, where you live, and what is your question?
Yeah, I'm Larry Stonewinder, and I'm from Springville up in the mountains, to the south of us. I'm a Navy veteran physician, spent my life teaching people about obstetrics and gynecology. And this is kind of a question to the Congressman. When I deal with my students, I'm teaching young people to be young journalists. And I've learned we don't listen to young people often enough. And they said, when you go there, ask them this question, "How come you, doctor, when you talk to us, you ask us what we have in common?" And I learn about them, and they learn about me. We have very little that we're not in common. Why don't you, as a politician, explore how you're common with your adversaries, so you can get together on issues instead of fighting each other? How about some common core, like we do in education, common values? Isn't there something you have in common?
And that's a really good question. But we do, there are a lot of us that do work really well across the aisle to get things done, and on immigration specifically, because that's what we're talking about here. I had a Democrat from Illinois that we probably don't see eye to eye on very much outside of immigration. But he actually came to the valley, did a town hall with me in Bakersfield, and we talked about immigration. But on this issue, there are a lot of folks on both sides. You just have to, you just, you've got a bunch out there that literally follow that, they get tied up in that buzzword, they see a few articles, they start getting nervous, they can't handle a little bit of pressure. We were elected as members of Congress as legislators to take tough decisions, to make tough choices, and to do the right thing, no matter what, no matter what people say. But when you have the information in front of you, you do what's right based on the information you have in front of you. And sometimes people just can't handle the pressure if it's from Facebook or Twitter, or if it's from talk radio. And it really is frustrating. But there are a lot of us that do really well working across the aisle, and I don't think that's the issue. It just, we have to find more that are willing to do it.
Yeah, I want to change topics just for a moment, because I'm a little surprised it hasn't come up yet tonight. And one of the comments I've heard on this particular topic all around the country is the impact on our schools. And often, we get families who say, "We're challenged in our schools already. Schools are bursting at the seams, and then we bring in more people." Should we be concerned about that? Is it an obligation we have, Mr. Cunha, to educate perhaps those children who are here illegally or undocumented, whatever phrase you want to use? Or is it creating a problem for those who have always been here? What's the right solution?
Well, as a former college professor at Reedley College, I'll use that. Many of my students in the School of Ag, big, back in the 70s and 80s, many of my students in the machinery class were Hispanics, Latinos, that were illegal. How do I know they're illegal? Well, in 1986, we did some things. We made some progress for many of those kids and those families. But those kids that are here in our rural communities, they make up our communities. They are the community. They're part of the church, they're part of the school system, and all kids, all kids deserve an education. They all do. Now, we have to figure out how we economically do that. And we should be able to, we're grownups, okay? And Sacramento should be able to, and so should Congress, without any questions in DC. But all kids that are here should have a right to go to school, especially elementary school, junior high, and high school. Then after that, if their decisions are to go on to college, great. And that's why we have junior colleges, state universities, and land grants. But all kids that are here, that are part of our system, they don't have document corrections because of how they were brought here, et cetera, et cetera. But they deserve an education. And I just need to tell you this, is that many of the immigrants that are in this country and in agriculture, in this valley, in this state, they pay their taxes. They pay the FUTA, they pay the FICA, they pay, they're part of our communities. And when people say they're on welfare and unemployment, there's no way, there's no way. You may have one or two figure out how to do the system. The largest majority of these people that work in agriculture and construction are not on welfare. They are hard-working people. And let me tell you, if it wasn't for them in the past 30 years, 40 years, I don't think agriculture would be the number-one world-feeding food chain there is, because we don't have people that want to work in our industry that have been born here. They believe, in this state, for example, 2 million people on welfare. I can't figure that out. In 1996, Congress passed with President Clinton, "Welfare to Work, five years, you're off. No more." Those people are still on welfare today. So the system is broken in that respect. But I give these people, in all nationalities, from the Asian community, the Latino community, and other ethnic groups that have been here working, they work hard and they pay their taxes. When people say they don't, well, get off of the couch and maybe go out and work in the field or work in the yard.
I want to bring the Reverend back in the conversation. Anything to add to this particular topic?
Well, you know, so much there. And I agree with you so much of that. That's why when we look at immigration, there are so many systems that are broken that feed into this. And back to the bipartisan, what happens in Congress, just as you mentioned with President Reagan, that it was Congress that did this. Our problem is, is now we've got this branch, whether it be the executive branch, or the Senate's going to do this, or what. We, the people, we're the government. It's about time that we put the pressure upon the politicians to say, "Enough is enough. You guys go to your room and don't come out until you get this thing fixed, or we're going to send somebody else back in there." Because we're guilty of setting back also and blaming those in Sacramento, or in DC, or wherever, when it's us. We're the one that sent them there, and we're the ones that have the power to bring them back from there. So that's why we can't just say immigration, or the IRS, or whether it's the welfare system. We've got a lot of broke systems that are not compassionate, they're not reaching out. We're the ones responsible for it. We need to do our part as, as citizens and do the tough thing to say, "Fix this thing."
And just quickly, Congressman, we hear about all these things that are broken. Instead of remodeling a home, sometimes we knock down a building and build a brand-new home. Are we at that stage in this particular process? Do we have to rebuild the entire immigration system?
I hope it's not that. It's to that point. But immigration is, is one of the, and water is a complicated topic here in the valley, but when you look at immigration...
All right, I'm going to interrupt you just for a second, Congressman, because I have to say goodbye to our audience at home. Those of you watching on CW 59, continue watching us on KNPH.com.
Immigration is one of the most complicated topics out there. And everything from who comes in, how many, if you're going to look at Ag-specific, who's going to make the decision this year that, oh, we need half a million, or do we need a million, or do we need 700,000? If we have a late storm, if we have an early storm. I mean, those are all things that play a role. And so immigration is going to be one of the most complicated topics, and there is going to be a point that we pass laws, but there's also going to be a point where Secretary of Labor, Secretary of Homeland Security, and the Secretary of, of, what is it?
Of Ag.
Ag will have to play a role in, in these type of decisions on a year-to-year basis. And those things all have a real implication on people's lives. And it's something that, when you look at immigration reform, that's why it's so hard, because it's not a simple half a million people, or 5 million people, like what the President did. And the President really didn't go by a number. He went by a category, people that have families and have a connection to, with relatives. But it is something that's not that simple, where you could just throw out a number and say, "This is what we need, because this is how much, how many acres we've got in the United States." It's a process. It's something that has to be dynamic, that works with our economy and how our economy changes, and make sure that we protect Americans as well in the workforce, but allow the opportunity to grow. And that's why it's so complicated. If we had, if we were all locked in a room to come up with a solution, it still would be difficult, because you're still going to rely on the President and his secretaries to make some decisions on a, on a year-to-year basis. And legislation is just complicated. It just, it's, it's frustrating, but we have to get the rhetoric out, sit down, have a conversation, and make sure we're flexible and moving forward with the process that works, so it's good and beneficial for everybody.
We're back to the live audience. Please tell us who you are, where you live, and what is your question?
My name's Teresa Castillo. I'm the current president of Peace Fresno. I actually live in Madera. And my question is right along what we've been speaking about. With the DAPA that the President has proposed, or his executive order, wouldn't this alleviate some of the social services impact? Because when parents are deported, the students, the children, go into social services under foster care. Wouldn't that also help to alleviate some of the impact of human trafficking? Because it's noted that foster care children are one of the prime targets of human trafficking, especially in our valley. So those are a couple of my questions on social services, as well as the taxes that the adults will be paying, that will be working legally, once they get their social security numbers, once they have that status, where now they may be buying social security numbers.
So those are, there's a lot of questions in there, but yes, this will have an impact. Will it be long-term? No, because it is a three-year deal. And so children don't grow up and move out of the house in three years. But when you look at the tax side of it, like Manuel mentioned earlier, there are a lot of people paying social security under fake numbers or someone else's numbers, and there are, there is money being paid. And when those people are paying, they're obviously using an I-9, they're filling out a form, and they're paying taxes on their paycheck, because they are getting a paycheck, they're not being paid cash. And all those resources do go towards a lot of the local law enforcement, a lot of the local taxes, and state and federal. But at the end of the day, yeah, it's going to have a real role, a real effect on keeping families together, because overall, what President did the other day was mostly around people that have children, trying to keep families together. And I think that's why you didn't have quite the uproar as what people expected, because it was such, it was targeted specifically to try to keep families together, and really not a lot of people can argue with that side of it.
I'd like to bring the Bishop back in the conversation. And again, this young lady asked a question. She touched on all these issues about keeping families together, but also the issue about human trafficking, which we talked about earlier in the program. Anything to add to this?
Well, obviously, it's, it's this reality with not only the undocumented that we have within our communities, they are a real part of fabric of, especially when they get involved in that trust value that the Chief was referring to. Once they feel that they are in a situation, an environment, then they're going to become more trusting, and come out of the shadows, and become a real integral part of our society. The strong family values and the work ethic that these folks bring is just amazing, just amazing. Because as was already referred to, no one else here, born in the United States, is really going to line up to take many of these jobs, whether they're working out in the dairies as dairy workers, or out in the fields, or in housekeeping many times. And so we really, really respect what they can do. We are an immigrant church, we are an immigrant nation. And I think that's, the kaleidoscope of who we are as a nation really is really strengthened by those gifts that these families are bringing in.
All right, before we check back in with social media to see what's happening with Facebook and Twitter, I want to find what's on your, this gentleman's mind. Please tell us who you are, where you live, and what is your question?
I'm Ryan Jacobson with the Fresno County Farm Bureau, and we know the immigration system is broken. And we've talked about the guest worker program component of that. Could we get to the specifics of why today's guest worker program isn't working, and what some of those solutions may be in the future?
I want to start with Mr. Cunha. We haven't heard from you in a few moments.
Oh, thank God. Yes, we have a guest worker program called H2A. It's broken. It's 53 years old. It's not friendly at all to any worker that comes in from a foreign country. The cost is prohibitive. But when a worker comes here, he has to tell the Department of Labor, "I'm going to pick peaches." If he picks a nectarine, he, the grower, will be in a violation of the Labor Department law. If he picks a nectarine versus picking peaches, absolutely the most difficult definition of what a guest worker program should be for agriculture. The worker that's here, it caused him to fly here, the employer paid for that, housing they have to pay for, and all of the transportation the employer pays for. And when you say, "Oh, you can only do that one crop," well, then wait a minute. So how do I pick nectarines? Well, you've got to go back out of the country and repetition. That's the Department of Labor, and that's why the guest worker program that was designed by the Senator, the Senate, put into the conference committee, as the Congressman was working on, is allow workers that come here on guest worker programs to pick variety of tree fruit. So you pick all the type of tree fruit, vegetables. So you're here for 10 months. But to have such a law that they did 53 years ago is the most broken-down guest worker program for agriculture that we've ever, ever seen.
I want to bring the Reverend back in the conversation. And let me just shift gears just briefly on this, because we're talking about agriculture here in the Central Valley. You go two hours north, and you get the high technology. And there are firms, businesses, major corporations that talk about bringing in more people under the H1B visas, the high-technology, high-skilled workers. And yet, and here at FOX 26, we're not taking positions on this discussion, but we realize the public scratches their head when they hear that the Microsofts of the world are laying off people, while at the same time saying we need to bring in more immigrant workers. So the public can be confused as to what is right and what is wrong. How much of it is politics? How much of it is a real need? Any thoughts on any of this?
Well, and I'm an Okie, so I'm one of the first immigrants that came in here to pick our fruit. You've got a difference here in, in the market. I mean, you've got to have people to pick fruit, and you need people to help work on computers and whatever. Two different skills, both of them very necessary in our economy. So to be able to say that these can and these can't, that's where a fairness has to be brought about, and a marketplace has to drive that to some degree of, of what is needed and how do we meet that need? I mean, that's why we're bringing workers in to fill, fill needs. We need, we need to fill the need in the fields, we need to fill the need there within the tech industry. So that's where a fairness comes about, and, and market's going to drive that to some degree, that again, will make this nation, the prosperous nation that's been in the past, whether it be in the fields, or whether it be in the lab.
Another great opportunity for us to take a break here, because social media is totally blowing up with people commenting about Facebook and Twitter. So let's check with our social media anchor. Liz, what do you have for us?
People in our studio, a lot to say, at home as well, a lot of them being a big part of tonight's Town Hall on Immigration in America. You can join that conversation by posting your Facebook or Twitter. One hot-button issue relating to immigration that has, has actually been the issue of driver's licenses for the undocumented. Here in California, they will be allowed to receive them come January 1st. And here's what George Stefano was saying on Facebook. "Why should California allow driver's licenses for illegal immigrants? How is it going to be possible to ensure they have adequate or any insurance? Why are we ignoring the illegal part of the immigration issue?" Joff Licky also just tweeted us, saying, "How can any plan justify bypassing the hard work that legal immigrants had to go through to get here?" And Gabe Pat served up this food for thought over on Facebook, saying, "These are not cattle we are debating about. They are people that feel and think and have kids just like you. They are people in the pursuit of happiness, not like we wrote that into our Constitution or anything." And remember, you can also tweet us using the hashtag #YourVoiceYourFuture. We certainly thank you so much for being part of this and helping exchange some of the different thoughts here, not only with our studio audience, but again, with other people over on social media. Mark, I'm going to toss it back over to you in the studio.
Thank you, Liz. And let's go back to the studio audience. Please tell us who you are, where you live, and what is your question?
Yes, my name is Jessica Smith Bobadia. I am a professor at San Joaquin College of Law, and I am the director of a nonprofit organization there called the New American Legal Clinic, where we train law students how to assist immigrants and refugees ethically and responsibly. My question for the panel was, what do all of you think is a realistic and a good package for comprehensive reform? What elements should that have, both to realistically have a chance of getting through Congress, and also just to reflect our nation's values and priorities?
We'll start with the Bishop. How about a few thoughts from you? Maybe we'll get a couple of thoughts from everybody here. What would that package look like?
Well, I think, first of all, we need to have something for the unification of families. That, that is really it. Many, many times, when I was growing up, we had the Bracero Program, and one of the sad things about that whole program was it divided families. Many, from that, the Mexican nationals came over, began to work, they sent remittances home, but began second families and third families. second families and third families. What we're trying to do is keep the unification of families. So I think that has to be a real, a real important part of any new comprehensive reform.
Mr. Cunha?
Several little spots. Probably the, take care of the workers that have been here for 20, 30, 40 years, that didn't qualify for ERCA. So we need to deal with those. We need to deal with the family discussion, not like what happened in ERCA. We need to improve that. We need to have guest worker programs that fit the needs of industries in this state, construction, high-tech, agriculture, food processing, manufacturing. All of that has to be a part of this, has to be. We also have to have the opportunity for these folks that have been here, the opportunity to become residents. And then to have the opportunity, because they've been here, they're part of our communities, to go to citizenship. They should have that right. But we should not force people to have to be a resident or to be a citizen if they only want to come here and work. And that's all they want to do. And they want to go back to their home, to their country, because that's where their families are. So that needs to be part of this. And of course, taking care of the border is part of that package. But you can't just have, "Take care of the border first, and then we'll come back in five years and deal with it." That can't happen.
Congressman?
I think the most important part of any immigration system has to be the flow. I mean, how you control who comes in, and the process of allowing what visas, what guest workers, and all the different opportunities. That is what puts us in the problem that we are today, because we don't have a system that works. We don't have the ability to bring the people in that we need. And we also have, we struggle with those who are trying to come in that just want the American dream, when they're being held up. I mean, we're hearing things, stories of lines that are literally 70 years long in the current system today. And there's a real problem with that, and that has to be addressed. And I agree with the comments made with the first two, and I'm sure I'm going to agree with the last one following me, but I think that the system in general, just the flow, we call it future flow when we talk about it in Congress, is something that has to be addressed and has to be done right.
Reverend?
Well, I think obviously, we just got to realize the fact, we're not sending anybody home. That just, that is not going to happen. It's not practical, and just take that argument off the air. We're not sending anybody home. Second of all, I think, just as Manuel said, we've got to deal with those that are here. And we've got to control our borders to be able to control the flow, just as the Congressman said in that, "We've got to do it in a compassionate way. We've got to do it in a fair way." It's not so much where we start with these hot topics of, like you mentioned, the words that we use. We always start talking. Maybe we need to start listening, because I've found that as we begin these arguments, as it comes to a close, really, we're a lot closer than we really think we are in finding an answer to this. It's just working out the practical parts of it.
We're back to the studio audience. Please remind us who you are, and what is your question?
My name's Camille Cook, and I'm an immigration attorney here in Fresno, California. And as somebody who works with local immigrant families, and listening to some of the social media comments, and a lot of what you've said about the, you know, some people just can only see amnesty, and some people can only see racism, you know, my question for you is, you know, especially for the pastor, and for the Bishop, and, you know, talking to people in the community, do you feel that people understand that these families are mixed families? And when we talk about, "Oh, Americans first," there are American citizens married to undocumented people. There are, you know, American citizens with undocumented children. There are, you know, American citizens, you know, American citizen children, of course, with undocumented parents. They're all mixed up. And it's, they are us, and they're right here in the valley. And you, guess what? When they come into my office, I can't tell which one is the immigrant, just by whether or not they speak English or speak with an accent. Do you feel like the community understands that? That's my question for you.
Let's start with the Reverend.
Well, when you talk about Americans, what is an American? An American in brown, an American in black, an American in white. An American is someone who believes in a dream, and has achieved that dream, whether they were born here, or whether they migrated here as an immigrant. These are people who are looking for dreams. Yes, families are definitely a part of this. And I think that's where we've got to bring the human factor into it. I have no problem with people who have accents. And I'll just leave that one right there. Again, we can't define people by the ways we've defined it before. What has made America great is the dream that we've all looked to achieve. I talked today to an immigrant from Africa, and as he left the discussion, he made this question. He says, "I know we've got problems, because we're talking about immigration." He says, "I'm so glad I came here, because this is the greatest country on the face of the earth. Even with all of our problems," that's where we've got to start talking about them and working them out. So back to your original question to me, so then we can be that one that can reach out to help solve some of the problems that this world is facing, and these countries are facing, that cause people want to flee here as a sign of refuge.
Bishop?
And I see that, day in and day out, we have, talking about accents. One of the areas of concern that some of our parishes come up with, "Bishop, you know, we can't understand, we can't understand our priests." And the reason is, this particular priest is a missionary, has left a third-world situation in his generosity, and is now, the third-world is really re-evangelizing the first world. It worked the other way around. When I was a young priest, we had homegrown people. So consequently, I think what we need to understand is, yes, that we need to really get the message out, that, yes, we have a mixed population, and that includes many of our clergy that come in to really come in and spend a little bit of time, and then go back. It's almost like a guest worker program. These men are coming from what we used to refer to as missionary countries. We now are the missionary country. They are re-evangelizing us, where it was the other way around.
And we're going to follow up with a follow-up question from the doctor in a moment, and then after that, we're going to get our last conversation with Liz on the social media desk, to find out what our viewers at home think. But Doc, remind us who you are.
Yeah, Larry Stomper from Tulare County. This is a toughie. It has to do with, I'd like to hear a consensus from the panel. We've heard a lot of individual opinions, but I want to hear about the carrot-and-stick philosophy. I'd like you to reach consensus among all three, all four of you. What are three items of carrots that could make doable things, that will make the politicians take action and solve the problem? And three negatives, and please don't make sequestration one of them. And then I want you to prioritize and tell me which is most likely the carrot to work, and which is the least likely to not succeed that's negative, in a short period of time, of course.
If we didn't know you were a professor, we certainly would know now.
I want them to commit. Do we do that?
I want to hear some commitment. I want to hear some consensus. All right. Let's start with Mr. Cunha. We haven't heard from you in a few minutes.
Thank you. Dodged that one.
You guys all dodged it. I think if you're, and I'm going to, I think maybe for all of us, because you've asked three major question areas, and very difficult. And I think we all today, or tonight, we all agree that the system is broken, okay? And that we have to deal with it now, rather than later, okay? And the first and the most important, I think all people would agree, those that really understand immigration, we need to take care of the people that have been here for years, because our system hasn't been able to deal with it, because we haven't fixed it for 30-plus years. When Reagan signed it into law, he told Congress, "This is only the beginning. You must continually fix it."
You're answering the what?
I want to hear the how.
To do it is to take the people that are here and put them in a system that's legal. Put them in a system that's legal.
How do we force the politician to get there? That's where, I want the carrot.
Take away their dinner and their lunch.
The carrot. Congressman, what's your carrot?
Not you, the other ones.
Well, though, for me, the thing that I see the most, and I'm one of the guys that are out actually pushing to see a good system pushed forward, good immigration system. I've signed on, and I've been vocal on the issue, and I've put a lot of pressure on leadership. But it really falls to the people that are watching TV today and following this story. Call your member of Congress and just say, "Hey, what are you doing to help fix this problem?" And bring some ideas. Ask to meet with them. But that really is it. Every time I make a decision or take a vote on the floor, I look to my staff and say, "All right, who's called in? Who has reached out to us on this specific issue? What do they want me to do?" And people have to reach out to their members of Congress and tell them where they're at on immigration.
And just a quick follow-up on that. Congressman, do you have a sense, is money the single biggest driver of this? Or are there other issues?
No, it's not money at all. It is really, literally, just the two extremes running in a conversation right now. And it's really a shame, because there are a lot of people who want to see this get done. The majority of my constituents, when I do my Teletown Halls, or my community coffees, will all talk about it. They'll start off in one corner, and then as we talk through it, they're like, "All right, it seems like we actually agree more than what I thought." And it just takes time for people to reach out and talk to those folks.
All right. We're starting to run out of time here, so I want to check in with what our viewers at home think about all of this tonight. One last time at our social media desk. Liz, what's the latest?
Well, Mark, we've been sharing a lot of the comments that people have been posting over on Facebook and Twitter, but now we're getting to some of the questions for our panelists. And there's a question that hits right to the heart of the Central Valley's economy, which is agriculture. Joyce Carson wrote this, quote, "Our taxes have subsidized farming for too many decades. They pay dirt-cheap wages, and then the government has to provide housing, food stamps, and healthcare. You need to pay your workers a living wage." Mildred Propero also asked this, "What about those other nationalities who came here with a tourist visa, who never left the United States? Is the government keeping track of them?" Also on Twitter, Lisbeth Dela Cruz asked this, "Under President Obama's immigration plan, how many years do eligible groups have to wait to collect government benefits?" And that's a question that just came in moments ago over on our Twitter page. Lisbeth, full of a number of questions. However, Mark, as I toss it back over to you, there's one other question, and I got to tell you that persistence pays off for the people that are following our town hall tonight. Jesus Gallegos asking one more time, hoping that maybe one of the immigration attorneys in the audience can answer this for him. He's a dreamer, and he wants to join the armed forces. Can he do that? How long will he wait? Maybe one of them will have the answer there.
So let's talk about the dreamers. Can they join the military?
There's no such thing as a dreamer, because there's no such thing as the Dream Act, because Congress hasn't passed it. So no.
But you don't have to be a U.S. citizen to join the U.S. military.
You don't have to be a U.S. citizen, but you have to have a green card with very, very limited exceptions for people with certain language skills that don't include Spanish. So basically, no.
So the Deferred Act that was, that the President had put into place a couple years ago, doesn't allow these undocumented immigrants who were these pseudo-dreamers, if you want to call them, to join the military?
Correct. It does not.
Are you aware of any petition process where they could make an exception?
I'm not, but I'm looking at Representative Valadeo, and he's nodding his head no as well. I know there's been a lot of activity around this, and I know that, like I said, there's been tiny, tiny little exception for people with certain language skills, I think. But again, it doesn't include Spanish, and it's like, and for all intents and purposes, no. You can, if you're undocumented, you cannot join the, you cannot join the military. I know there's a lot of young people out there that would like to do it, but it hasn't happened yet.
There were two pieces of legislation introduced in this last Congress, one by Congressman Jeff Denham, just to the north of us, and one by Mike Kaufman out of Nevada. And both of them were specific to that issue of allowing kids that were here to join our military and use that as a process to getting either legal status or citizenship. But those bills, as much as we fought, weren't able to make it anywhere. And they literally just were introduced, and that's about as far as they got. So very frustrated with those as well. Good piece of legislation, and both that I supported.
And we're going to have to make that the last word, because we've run out of questions here this evening. You've witnessed spirited and passionate debate, and a range of opinions on the whole issue of immigration. But I'll tell you what was not debated tonight. Why would foreigners leave their homes, spend their life savings, sometimes embark on a dangerous journey to come to another land? And it wasn't debated, because I don't think there really is any debate. And honestly, more often than not, it's not about jobs or schools or property. It's about the opportunities that everyone can achieve in this country, whether they are, have been living here for years, or they're immigrants. Because without a doubt, and you heard it a few moments ago, the Reverend mentioned it, despite its flaws, the United States stands as the greatest nation on the face of the planet. That is the reason why people come here. It is a place to start and live the dream. I'd like to thank all of you at home for joining us tonight. I'd like to thank our panel and our live audience for being a part of this entire discussion. I'd like to thank the Fox 26 crew for the wonderful job they've done tonight. Make certain you join our Facebook page at facebook.com/kmphfox26, and tell us how you thought tonight's discussion went. Make sure you watch the Fox 26 News at 10 for coverage of tonight's town hall and all the day's breaking news. And as always, we salute our military, law enforcement, firefighters, EMTs, and other emergency personnel for their service to our communities and our nation. I'm Mark Hyman. Good night.